They're not planning on.
I don't even want to read your report.
That's why he was out there making very nice. He was like, I think he was out there buying some.
Put together this nice. Your name's actually.
Um.
Charlie.
Yes. I have a piece of German away and we got it to Toyota for Sydney's gonna drive it tomorrow.
I can read no more.
We got rid of my old Sequoia with two hundred miles of miles and got a Land Rover. Full fuel screen.
Yeah. All right, calling to order the February fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Lake City Council. It's six thirty P M. All council members are present this evening. Let's start with item two, which is a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to those who are joining us in person. We have some remote viewers as well tonight, I'm assuming. Item three is mayor comments. Long Lake News meeting review and updates. He'll just give an update as to what's been happening since our last council meeting, which is two weeks ago. Uh, last Thursday, I went to a retirement gathering for Mayor Marvin Johnson of the City of Independence. So Mayor Johnson's been the mayor of Independence for forty-five years, or he was up until December thirty-first roughly. Nobody really knows of a record beyond that that may have, uh, anybody who's been a mayor for longer than that, uh, in Minnesota. Uh, really a great accomplishment. He served his community well and a lot of a great turnout from the, uh, uh, re- independence residents as well as other local officials to say farewell to Mayor Johnson for his years of service. So we thank him for that and he, uh, hard to, and my understanding is he really missed an oral school board meeting and very involved in his community and doing a lot of great things. So we'll miss Mayor Marvin Johnson. Wish him well. And then on Saturday, uh, Long, Oral Lions, uh, hosted the Snowball Open at Birch's on the lake. So I made an appearance there and great turnout there. It was a pretty, pretty good day for it. Not too hot, not too cold. Uh, saw a lot of folks in costumes and that sort of thing out golfing in the lake and very busy in Birch's as well. So thanks to Lions for putting on that great event this year and thanks to the weather, Mother Nature cooperated and last year had to be canceled. But it was again, it was pretty good weather this year and, uh, great turnout by the community for that event. So a quick, couple of quick updates there is all that's been happening so far in early February here. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is to approve this evening's agenda. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item five consent agenda. We have items A through E on the consent, uh, consent agenda this evening. Um, kind of the routine matters and then, uh, one of them is approving us on sale liquor license for the Church of Saint George for their Lenten fish fry on Friday, March seventh and Friday, April eleventh. And, and the other one is, uh, one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for, again, for Church of Saint George for their corned beef and cabbage dinner event on March fifteenth. So a couple of fun events coming up at Saint George's. So with that, any questions for staff regarding any items on the consent agenda this evening? Or any comments anyone wants to make? If not, entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council and comments, comments should be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the day of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach for open comments this evening? Any submitted open comments, uh, staff?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll, we'll move on to our regular business items this evening. Item seven. Starting with item seven, A, presentation and remarks by Hennessy County District Six Commissioner Heather Edelson. Welcome Commissioner. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Well, good evening, you guys. It's good to see you. Um, so, well, great, Mayor. I can go ahead and start right away.
Yeah, we're getting your presentation fired up here.
Right now.
Well, we queue.
Give us a second.
I just introduced myself.
Difficulty in the back.
So you guys all know a little bit about me, council members. I haven't had the chance to meet all of you. Um, you have one of the best names I think I've seen so far.
Stuck with it for a while.
Were you, were you just elected in the last election? I read, I saw your name.
It's not a joke.
It actually is. It's really amazing. Well, I'm, I'm jealous. Mine wasn't as good. Um, so Heather Edelson, uh, good to meet all of you. I, the mayor has met me a few times. We've been in contact. Um, and I met many of the fire, uh, fighters here, so it's great to meet them as well. So, uh, I was in the House of Representatives representing Edina. Don't, don't give me the look. I know. Um, for six years and, uh, then I ran, the seat opened up and I called Jan Callison and I'm like, well, maybe. Um, so I won a, a special election. I won a primary, a special election and then the general election. So three elections in less than a year. Um, if you don't like somebody, that's usually what you set up for them. So I, I think Chris Latandres maybe headed out for me or maybe I just signed up for it. So, um, my sons and my, my husband and our three sons live in Edina. We, I have twins that are in high school. They're fifteen and they're working on driving right now, which is super fun. They have a permit. So those stickers are like danger beware, like turn off the road. And then I have a, a sixth grader who's super into sports. Um, and one likes debate and, and speech. So always one like you, right? All right. Well, good. Well, so my goal tonight is to just teach, or will teach you, to, um, have you just understand a little bit more about Hennepin County um, and what we do. And the picture of that that was just on the last slide, thank you so much, is that there are seven commissioners, um, to start with. So there are seven commissioners. I'm the short one over there. Um, and so seven of us represent seven different districts. Um, and then go ahead to the next slide. Thank you so much for doing the slides. I really appreciate you. Um, so I hopefully will give you a, a brush, a brush of what it looks like. Hennepin County's huge. Um, so we have one point three million people. I represent a hundred and eighty-two thousand people and I have sixteen cities. Yes, I drive all over and my husband's like, are you getting reimbursed for this? Okay, so sixteen cities. I was in Spring Park last night. I, this is my ninth city council that I've, um, uh, presented to. So a hundred and eighty-two thousand people, um, in our district, sixteen cities. And I, I would say our district has the most water and the best looking people. So, uh, let's keep going. And then just so you know, for Hennepin County, we have forty-five cities. So you can just see Kevin Anderson and I, Commissioner Anderson and I are the ones that have sixteen cities. So we have the bulk of it. We don't have any Minneapolis. We're suburban. So, um, Hennepin County, it's interesting. So we have seven commissioners and then we hire a county administrator, just like you hire your city administrator. We hire a county administrator and he acts like a C E O for the county. The county has ten thousand employees. So it's a lot. It's a huge, um, huge system that we operate and there are seven different lines of business. So this just, uh, kind of gives you an example, health, income, uh, justices, public safety, education, employment, housing and connectivity. So of course transit there. Um, so next slide. My goal here tonight is to walk you through some of those so you understand a little bit, uh, a bit about it. Um, so what you have on this slide is, so our budget is three point one billion outside of the state of Minnesota, which is a seventy billion dollar budget. I was on Ways and Means at the Capitol. It's huge. Um, so what three point one billion and we, uh, just like cities do, we look at levy increases. Now, Hennepin County's fundings, two third of it comes from state and federal sources. Um, and then one, uh, the one billion, so if you break it up essentially into three, uh, one billion comes from property taxpayers. And so this year, uh, we were looking at some increases and people have asked and I, so I'm going to try to, this is the positive about being the ninth city council is you get to, I'll try to layer in all the questions I've received. Um, so people have asked about the levy increase this year, which was five point five percent. Um, and that was due mostly to, again, that ten thousand employees that I told you about, cost of living increases and salary increases that we had to do. And, um, so, uh, with that, there was also, um, one levy point that we had to, I'll talk about later, but was for un, uncompensated care. Um, and then just to, for point of reference for other counties and what they did, uh, Ramsey County had a four point seven five increase. I mean, the Ramsey County though, they're smaller. It's different. Anoka County had sixteen point nine percent. Dakota was at nine point nine uh, percent levy increase and then Washington was at five point nine. Next slide. All right. So here is, uh, here's the pie broken up. Uh, so in my former life, I was a mental health therapist with, uh, with a little bit of a sense of humor because you had to. There's, you can't really sustain yourself in that field. Um, and so you'll see forty-two percent of the budget for the county is Health and Human Services, which is what led me here. Um, plus I like finance. So, um, you'll see public works and capital improvement. So those are your thinking roads, bridges, libraries, construction of things. Um, I am offering to all of our councils, uh, hopefully this summer, if you haven't seen the Herc, which is our incinerator in downtown Minneapolis, or if you have not been to our medical examiner's office, I would love to offer those two tours, um, to council members. And I'll be sending an email to, to get, um, a gauge on who would like to go. Um, so with that, we're going to go to the next slide. All right. So human services, one of the biggest parts of our budget. Um, and so one thing I would always say is people are like, what does the county do? They think of county roads. They might drive them. But I would say, I always say, if you have a child with a disability or an aging parent, you're gonna, and, and maybe the aging parent is struggling financially, you're gonna know what the county does because we interact with their day-to-day life. Um, so for instance, the Minchoises waiver, um, right now we're going through a waiver process called waiver reimagine. Right now there's four waivers. We're going down to two. That's a massive expensive process and it's burdensome for people that have disabilities. Right now they have to get certified as disabled every single year, even though they might be somebody that has a disability probably for the rest of their entire life. It's, uh, this large process that takes like, the county does that work to ensure that they get the funding they need for their own incomes, um, through with D H S. And so we're a partnership with the state. Um, so I would say that's a big chunk of what we do. Mental health and substance use disorder. We have, uh, eighteen hundred Chicago. We're building right now a youth facility, a crisis facility for youth. Um, so when a young person interacts with the criminal justice system, oftentimes, um, I'm going to talk a little about this later too. Um, but there, uh, is a lot of mental health that's going around with young people, um, and that also aren't interacting with the law, but they're also truant. So we've got these buckets that we're trying to figure out how do we, um, address the complex needs of youth. And one of those is building a facility, um, right now that we've invested fifty million in at eighteen hundred Chicago. But we also have addiction services there and mental health, inpatient and outpatient beds. Um, we also do child protection. So when somebody, uh, reports, uh, a child that is being abused, seventy-five or seventy-seven percent of them are usually coming from schools or actually law enforcement and our firefighters. Um, and so they are being reported and they report to Hennepin County. We do the investigations to make sure that child is safe. I was a guardian of item, uh, when I was in my twenties. And so that was being the child's advocate in legal court proceedings. Um, and then economic supports, which you'll see that graph up there. I'll tie you to, um, you'll see from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, it doubled. And what we're trying to figure out, um, in that time, there's a few things that are going on. Uh, we've heard fentanyl is a big issue, right? Addiction, opioid addiction. There's a lot of that's happening in some of those numbers. Um, so we're trying to make sure that our county staff are getting in there. We're partnering with, um, outside resources to have pathways, um, for, for housing, for jobs and making sure that the county is doing that work that you're wondering, who's doing that? It's usually the county when it's, it's, it's the tough, messy work where we're going out and, and making sure we're finding out if somebody's homeless, if, um, encampments, for instance, when we're trying to say that those are not safe because they're not, um, how do we get in there and try to get people into housing instead? So with that, next slide. All right. So public safety, the next two slides are about public safety. So there's the public safety that the county does. And then there's the public safety that your sheriff and your county attorney do. Now, the sheriff and county attorney are under us, but they're duly elected. We don't have a ton of power outside of approving their, their budgets. So Hennepin County, so just one of the things, I'm just going to scroll down. We have the embedded social workers, which are really, um, I think they're really helpful and, and most of the police chiefs would agree. Um, we have the twenty-four seven where you call the mobile crisis team. We're working on that. Uh, Fire Chief, you might know, uh, that we have some delays there, but we're really working on that. They are helpful, but sometimes the delay in getting there needs to improve. Um, what a lot of the community doesn't always think about is our radio communication, our P S A P system. When you're calling nine-one-one, we're directing to, to our fire and to our law enforcement to make sure they get to the scene, um, and EMS. And then the last part, um, we own and operate, so the, the sheriff is operating the jails actually. We own the facilities. Um, so if there's any maintenance repairs, so, um, probation is in the same building of the Big H. Did you guys know it was the Big H downtown? Everybody knew that except me, I swear. Um, I was like, this building's a Big H. And they're like, yeah, where were you? Um, and so we own the, the adult correctional facility, the juvenile detention center. And then we have about twenty-two thousand, um, adults and juveniles that we supervise with all of probation every year. And next slide. And so I always think about Long Lake and all of the districts, um, over here is thinking about water patrol is probably one of the first things you think about, um, with the sheriff's department. But the sheriff is doing a lot of really incredible outreach. And her department i- is really just well-received in communities. I know that they're also, um, an example of where the sheriff can help out is in, say, Golden Valley where they don't have enough law enforcement officers right now that they're actually helping staff that, that agency. Um, and then we have the county attorney's office and I mentioned the be at school program. That's a truancy program. I think that we have some connections and work to do there to improve that services. Um, again, duly elected on their own. Um, I'm going to go to the next slide. All right. Um, so I want to highlight down here, the fifty-three thousand households in Hennepin County make below thirty percent of the area median income, but there's only eighteen thousand seven hundred units available to them. We have a bit of a housing crisis going on right now. And so the problem is, is some of our affordable housing developers are struggling right now to build more housing. Um, because there's been security costs and other things that are just unforeseen. And so we have this repair and grow program that we've started, um, working with affordable housing developers to address, uh, the unforeseen. I mean, I think there was one Aon pointed out that, uh, almost a million dollars over in cost for security for public safety that they had. So we need to house people, but we also need to get developers back to being able to actually build the housing to, to house people. So, um, the metro sales tax, um, at the second bullet there, um, that is actually helping us stabilize our funding. It was something we passed at the legislature in twenty twenty-three. Um, and it should bring in about twenty million dollars a year to build housing and help stabilize. Um, and so that's important because it's not shifting to property taxes. You're going to see that theme, I believe, in these, these, uh, like if it's a local option sales tax for cities, um, or what it is, I believe that that's a nice way. It's a tool for us as a county, as us for a state, as us for a city, to be able to spread out the cost, um, to ensure that, uh, we're getting the things that we need for a city. But I will just highlight, um, so we have a shelter all policy in Hennepin County that says if we don't leave children to sleep outside. So if you ever see a child or a family and you're like, we don't, uh, we don't know where they're going to sleep tonight, or you want to ask them, do you have a place to sleep tonight? Um, I want to give you my cellphone. Um, I'm genuinely serious. Get out your pens. Um, give you, I'm going to give you my cellphone for other things too. But it's six five one and for community members too, please write it down. Um, it's, I, I'm here for you. So six five one, seven eight five, eight six nine six. And that is my number from going to university in Saint Paul. Because it's six five one number, right?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I know. Yes, you can see I have, my attention's all over the place. All right. So next slide. Okay. So Hennepin County, we do health as well. You can see we're like the state, but we're like shrunken a little bit. Um, so we have, so Hennepin County Medical Center, this has been in the news a lot this year. This was a little bit of a contentious thing with me and the board when I first came on because I believe that Hennepin County, right now it has a five oh one C three and it's a subsidiary of the county. I think that's where it should stay. So it has its own board of directors. Um, and they are able to operate, operate separate from the county. When I came in, there was a group that I thought was trying to fold them into the county and I was like, no, you don't. And so we had a little bit of fight. And then you also maybe heard about the fifty percent pay increase. I was a no on that, by the way. Um, okay. So, uh, Hennepin County Medical Center operates separate from us, but we again own all of their buildings, just like the jails. So we own, um, all of the facilities. Um, so for the EMS, we own, um, all of the, they buy the ambulances, but we purchase, we procure them, we repair them. Um, so uncompensated care for the hospitals growing. And so those are uncompensated cares when you're underinsured or uninsured and we cannot insure you or we're not able to get to you to get to the, the paperwork done. And that, uh, grew to ten million this year. This is a national issue. We're seeing grow across this country. And so that was one of the things that we're faced with, that the hospital couldn't sustain on their own, so we had to help. So, um, what we're looking for is the second, second bullet there. When we go to the legislature, we have a team of about ten lobbyists. But we're looking for, the twin stadium is paid off now, but the ballpark sales tax extension. Um, so working with, uh, to North Memorial and Hennepin, uh, H C M C to have some of those funds to help stabilize. Because again, this is a national issue. Um, several of our hospitals here are struggling with that. Um, medical examiner's office is the Minnetonka. Uh, we partner with Dakota and Scott County. And they're tracking all of our, um, data in terms of if there is a shooting, if there was a, a unnatural death, um, making sure that we have autopsies. Um, and it's, it's really, uh, a great facility that's serving our community all across Hennepin County. Um, and then we, the opioid response, we're doing a lot of work on that. There's a lot of whether you live in Minneapolis or in the suburbs. We, um, that's an issue that's, that's pervasive all throughout. And so we really are working on that. But the mental health crisis, you'll see that the fifteen million dollar crisis stabilization center, um, that should be open in the next two months. Uh, we right now are in the process of doing a quick build, um, because the need is, is, uh, it's urgent. So next slide. And education. So what people don't think of when they think of the county is, um, we fund a portion of the school-based mental health, social workers. Um, and we also have a partnership with schools. Um, we, I know we've passed free meals, but, uh, before that, we were helping with, uh, financially with some of the food services. But we were also helping, um, we're helping if, if a school identifies a student that has housing instability or needs, the county comes into the school and makes sure that we're working with the family to make sure that they're getting their needs met. Um, and then I would also just highlight, actually, we can do that on the next slide. Uh, I think that's resident services. Yep, it is. So I'll talk about that. So the one thing, I was the chief author of the Read Act, um, at the Capitol. I have dyslexia. Um, you're learning a lot about me that you probably don't want to know and I apologize. I'll force it on you. Um, so I have dyslexia. I grew up, I didn't read until I was in seventh grade and everybody was like, what's wrong with her? And we didn't know then, right? I grew up to a single mom in Minneapolis. Um, I had dyslexia and it doesn't mean you can't learn how to read. It means it's really difficult. And so I worked on literacy at the Capitol and not only is it people with dyslexia, but we only have fifty percent of our youth in, uh, Minnesota that are reading at grade level. And the numbers, um, honestly look a little bit less. That just came out. So one of the things that we're doing in all of our libraries and we'll be expanding that too, is, um, doing literacy tutoring. Now, yes, people, a lot of people in our community can afford their own literacy tutoring, but not every, everybody. And so I think it's really important that we have that as a resource for everybody and that it's tutoring, that is just as good as Groves or any of the other facilities that you would attend, which is where my kids go. Um, so service centers, we operate all of those. Ridgedale, Southdale, if you also want a tour of those, happy to get you one of those. Uh, it's really impressive what they do. And I feel like Ridgedale is always getting, uh, applause for getting people through quickly. Elections, the machines that you have at all of our city halls, they're provided to you from Hennepin County. We own them. We drop off the ballots. Of course, your lovely staff are the ones that maintain them and operate them. Um, but those, those are purchased by the county as a service, uh, with no fee, um, to cities. Assessment services where we're coming in and we're providing the assessment services on homes in the community. It's under, uh, thirty thousand residents now, but we're moving that to expand it to all, um, all cities and all forty-five cities. And then translation services, we offer those a lot in terms of health. Um, it's cut off a little bit. Bummer. Um, but we offer them for health services and human services to make sure that we're getting people the needs, uh, their needs met. And last but not least are grants and then I'm done. I know it's a lot. My apologies. Imagine giving this same pitch to sixteen cities. Um, but, oh, nope, it's two more slides. Public works. So public works, we do transportation. So all of our county roads, unless we're partnering with your local city, we're plowing those roads. We're maintaining them. Um, the lights, uh, the, let's see. Yes, there we are. Oh, and then, um, we have the energy and environment. The solid waste, uh, is one thing I want to highlight. And I've been talking about this a lot of the council meetings. There, um, is a group that would like us to close Herc, which is the incinerator downtown. And I would say right now we don't have a place for all the waste. And so we've been having this conversation where it's going to go. And I think the group really wants things to go to a landfill, but we don't have any landfills in Hennepin County. And so M P C A, which is our state, uh, Environmental Protection Agency, is setting standards, tried to reduce waste. I am for reducing waste. The problem is, is people are purchasing more. So how are we going to reduce waste is, um, I'm hoping that we can have collaborations with cities on that, um, to recycle more, to compost more. Uh, ultimately it's in all of our best interest, but sending, closing the incinerator at this point and having everything go to a landfill, I don't feel like is the, the right solution. We're not there yet. The levels are still too high for the amount of waste we're creating. Um, but I will say also the aquatic invasive species, which is really important, we are, we get that added to our legislative platform. You might have seen in the governor's, um, budget, he was, uh, going to cut fifty percent of our funding that we currently get for that, that we help with cities or help with, uh, the watershed district and also it goes to different like associations would really impact like Minnetonka. So that's something. We are actually, I want to increase the funding. We have some great ideas on how to do that. Um, so would like to see that increase and, and try to address, I mean, aquatic invasive speech, species are growing and I think it's hydrella is coming and, I mean, I've seen some things on that. It seems terrible. Um, and with that, we can go to the grants and I'll talk about the trees there. So we have a lot of goals around planting trees, but these are the grants. Um, every city I'm really pitching to try to get grants. I know that you guys sponsored a grant for the soccer facility. Yes? What is the name of it?
Uh, forget the official names.
Borno Westonka Youth Soccer, I believe.
Something, yes.
Yes.
Sports, the sports dome we call it. Yeah.
The sports dome. Yeah. So, well, with that, and then the, the last is questions. So this is, this is really it. But I want to make sure that tree canopy grants, I'm really highlighting the youth activity grants you sponsored. They received a two hundred and fifty thousand, I believe. Wasn't that right, Mayor? I feel like I, did I text you that one?
Yes.
It feels right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, and, uh, so business recycling is also a really good one. Um, trees, it's plant more, helps with climate change. And then business recycling. So that's, um, several of our senior living facilities I've been going and talking to, um, when I'm not attending city council meetings and talking to them about, um, a lot of senior living facilities are getting, they have styrofoam that they're using and that's not recyclable. That just goes into trash. Um, so trying to talk about the business recycling grants, looking at ways that we can switch over some of those things. And I'm happy to take any questions, Mayor, from you and the council.
That was great. A lot, a lot of information there. So appreciate that, Commissioner. Questions, start with, I mean, a couple, but I'll start with you guys first. Any questions, comments?
Are there any carp grants?
I like that. We should, we should go for that, actually. Now that you're saying it, and I used to be on the environment committee at the Capitol and I feel like that was something we were going to do.
Yeah, because I think it's, I mean, the city of Medina, the, the Waters Association and the city of Long Lake all pulled together to do a big car project on Long Lake. Um, and I think it was pretty successful.
It was, but it's not.
It's not the last.
Yeah, we, we should do more.
I would love to talk to you guys about that, just to learn more, to see if there's something we could do. Yeah.
Yeah, it was the watershed, watershed district, I think was part of the.
This is for Long Lake, not for Lake Minnetonka, although it runs into Lake Minnetonka, so.
Right, right, right. Yep. Well, that's a good one.
I'm sure it's available online, but the, uh, the opening of the new stabilization center for mental health.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how is admis- admisson, it, how does one get admitted to that? Does that come from, directly from the emergency rooms or?
Yeah.
How's it going to be utilized?
Um, thank you, Mayor, um, and council member. So, um, it's going to be multiple different ways. And so how we triage crisis with youth is sometimes they will, oftentimes they're going to go right to an emergency room, but not always. They might actually go to the juvenile detention facility. Um, and then there will be assessments that are done at that point. Um, but we're dealing with, um, kids that have really complex, complex mental health needs. And so that's primarily what that's going to be about. So, um, oppositional defiant disorder, uh, uh, essentially people, youth that are violent that are struggling with pretty severe mental illness, that's really what that crisis stabilization center is for. Right now we don't have places for them. And, um, I will say, like, as, as somebody that came from the legislature, uh, work, I worked a lot on mental health. Um, and it was really bipartisan, but when you actually get into the implement. But when you actually get into the implementation of policy, of where that young person's going to go, you have these theoretical ideas of this is what we're going to do. These kids have nowhere to go right now. And I'm like, you can talk about policy all day long, but when you have four kids that we have to put in a hotel room? Because there's nowhere else, and their parents cannot take them back. They literally can't take them back. Because we have our first responders out every five minutes. We've got to figure this out, and so that's why this facility is so needed. So in terms of how we get youth there, I think we honestly have an idea of several that are going to have to go there. And we're working with the seven counties, seven metro counties, looking at how do we build the next step for that.
That was my next question, because I saw it was only 15 beds. Is there room for expansion of that or plans for expansion of that?
Mayor and council member, yes, there are. There, the thing we're working right now is we don't want Hennepin to be the only payer of that, though. We need to have that be a collaboration, a partnership. It's too expensive, quite frankly, and the burden would be too much. And the demand is there, so we're hoping that all of our counties can pitch in and that this can be a collaborative effort. And that honestly, that we can get it built quickly. I think that is the urgency of it, is somebody said, well, we should go to the legislature. And I was like, yeah, but we don't have time. This is, this needs to be done last year. And so somebody says, open up the county homeschool. The county homeschool is not, it's not prepared to be transitioned to that. And so, and that model didn't work. We have very different needs than what we had even five to 10 years ago. And so, thank you, council member.
Questions? All right, others? Yeah, just we appreciate all the county does. I think most people that are not in this line of work or in the city councils or others don't know everything the county does. So that was a good, good presentation that I know we're particularly thankful for, all the assistance you give in this county gives when it comes to elections. And the equipment for that, and the assessment services was a big thing for us this year. Because we were, we were able to migrate to the county after many, many years of having a private kind of company do that. And it's, it's been a significant cost savings for us and an improvement from, you know, a technology standpoint. And some better services for our residents when it comes to that. So we appreciate that and many of the other things that the county does. And so thanks for letting us know about that. And then just, yeah, on a personal note, thank you for being engaged in our, in our district. And I know I've been at least one meeting you pulled together with area mayors to talk about issues in our communities and get feedback on that. I think you've heard the joke many times, but Hennepin County property line does not end at 494. There's a lot of cities west of 494 out to sway your district, and you've been great about reaching out to us and trying to offer your support and everything. So we appreciate that. All right, well, thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Another council meeting tonight, or is this it for tonight, hopefully?
This is it for tonight, for this weekend. Next week I have two. But I will just say too, you know, our district went eight months without representation. And I will say, our District Six is one of the wealthier districts. I think that you probably all acknowledge that at the Capitol, I represent Edina, which is a wealthier district. My, I see my job as making sure that our district gets the things that it needs. And it gets a proportionally some amount that's close to what we should at least, because we're a large taxpayer. And so while it's like a city, not everybody gets the equal amount. Sometimes you have more demands in one part of the city versus the other, and you're not going to charge that city more because they use more services. That's not how it works. But I will say that I want to make sure that the county is molding to the needs also of our cities. And so know that I genuinely give you my cell phone number, because I want us to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our communities. So I love the CARP idea, actually. And aquatic invasive species, they're, they're, they're immuneable to this. So I got it on our legislative platform. I want us to see us do more, because I think our community has a lot of water. And if there's ways that we can expand it, no, I'm, I'm all in to try to push for more. So, thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, we'll move on to item 7B. Presentation by the Long Lake Fire Relief Association requesting a fire pension benefit level change. So I think we'll start with our city administrator, Scott.
Sure. So thanks, Mayor. In your packet is a background summary of how the, how the pension increases have been happening since 2004. I'm not going to go through 20 years of increases, so I'll just kind of narrow it down for what their ask is today. In 2025, the Long Lake Relief Association Board of Trustees worked with their auditors to create projections based on varying returns in the market on their special fund. The board was looking for an increase of 14.28% or 21.45%. This increase, the pension benefit would increase from 7,000 to 8,000 per year service or $8,500 per year service. And as of 2020, at the end of 2020, toward the funding ratio was 126%. Also in your packet is some kind of assumptions of those variables. I believe it's what the state template essentially gives the state board investments template to the cities and fire reliefs. But only different input would be our balances and showing what those would reflect on. So Steve McDonald is here from Abdoak and Meyer, or actually just Abdo now. So he will be able to put you through the whole gauntlet of the report versus just the summary. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
All right.
Hey, welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have prepared a projection. I think this is probably the third or fourth one over the 10-year period that we've put together. I think it's really helpful to get a, the 10-year picture of what happens if we do a few things. And these are really straightforward assumptions. I'll go through, through those and then just to summary, the overview. Let's see, so some of the assumptions on, on revenue. State aid, we are assuming that the state aid that you received in, or will receive in '25 continues. I know there's some discussion about the area, those kind of things. The projection does assume that the $210,000 inflates by 3% a year from that point forward. The municipal, there's a potential for municipal contribution with some of these adjustments that you might make. We run through all the calculations according to the state statute. And with the assumptions that we've made, there's no additional municipal contribution. With the interest, with, when we prepare the Form SC, which is part of the audit process. That projects any potential for municipal contribution, but it also includes an interest rate assumption. And generally, that's 5%. So we created three scenarios. One, with the leaving at $8,000 benefit level and 5% interest for each of the years presented. The second one is raising the benefit level to 8,500 and also having a 5% increase each year. And then the third one is assuming a loss of 5% in 2027. Now, just footnoting it, I did look this afternoon to say, okay, if, if 2025, we happen to have a loss. What is the biggest loss we'd have before we trigger municipal contribution? And that was about 13%. If you lost 14%, it would be about a $4700 municipal contribution. And then goes basically doubles for every percentage point after that. Just looking, because I'm curious about that, and I figured that might be a question that we would get. But, so again, the calculation of how you come up with a municipal, or with a municipal contribution is not just based on having a bad year and having a, assets less than your accrued liability. It's a calculation that has six legs to it. There's three negative things. The normal cost, which is your accrued pension amount. So we calculated the amount, if everybody retired, this is what the liability would be. How much that goes up year over year is the first piece. Second piece is in those years, you have a deficit. 10% of whatever that deficit is gets added. And then the third thing is administrative costs. So administrative costs generally are about 24,000 for the relief association. But it's offset by your state aid, which generally has been about 210,000. And 5% of your total assets. Just thinking, like, as I'm explaining all of this stuff, I'm sure it's hard to follow, but that's basically how the calculation of the municipal benefit comes out. It's not just because you have a negative, a negative year. Okay, and so the, oh, pensions paid, we made an assumption of pensions paid based on what we know. So that reduces your pension liability, also reduces your assets. And then administrative expenses, we assumed a 3% increase. And then the accrued liability was based on the state's statute formula. Okay. So first assumption is the $8,000, $8,000 benefit level. And the way the table is laid out is line iteming each year of projected assets and accrued liability and calculating a vesting percentage or percentage funded. With this, it's a pretty safe assumption. You, the lowest level of funding you have is 115% in 2027, otherwise above 120% in each year. And that is a pretty good measure of security of the, of the plan. And as I mentioned before, no municipal contribution gets calculated there. Second one is 8,500. Again, probably the thing to note is the percentage funded does go down because you are raising the, the amount owed to the firefighters. But still a pretty secure percentage. 108% is the lowest year where percentage funded, and that's 2027. And then, I have all my notes on there too. But the, the year that shows a forecasted loss would be 2027. And your percentage funded does drop below 100% in 2027. But the formula I walked through does not calculate municipal contribution. You still have strong total assets and consistent state aid. That offsets some of the, the costs that are funded, so you wouldn't have an obligation in those years. And like I mentioned before, I did give a look at 2025, what really is your, your tolerance before calculating a municipal contribution. It would be a 13% loss or 14% loss in, in that year that would trigger it. But outside of that, you have good funding in each of those years. So with those scenarios, any, that increase would be supported by the numbers. With that, I can take any questions that anybody has.
Okay, questions for Steve or comments or? You know, we have three members of the, we have some city representatives on the fire advisor, I'm sorry, the Relief Association. And includes your representative from the council, Mike, anything to add?
Yeah, well, first I want to say thank you for taking my call today. And I know I threw a lot of crazy questions at you, and just so you guys know, we talked about the scenarios, the 5%. That's pretty standard for doing these calculations. In my industry, it's not. So I was like, okay, well, what kind of drawdowns and volatility should we expect? Because of 5% with, you know, growth per year is, is just kind of that standard. And really, the funding rate that we should expect or should require is, you know, a function of the volatility of the assets that's, that are held in that, in that account. So we looked a little bit at the, at the funds that's being held. But I think given, you know, the information we have, I think everything makes sense. It makes sense to me. I guess I do have one concern, and that's the, the state aid number. And that there's uncertainty right now, and I don't know if you guys know where that's, where that is, or if there's any color on what that is. Because the assumption right now assumes that we have a consistent state aid.
Well, yeah, I guess a question I have for you, Steve, is it, so it's already changed, like we, you know, effective July of last year, Orono changed the service area. And so my understanding is it has to go a full year, kind of goes in 12-month increments. So we won't, that reduction won't actually take place until, I think, after 2025, if I'm not mistaken, or more. So that, that's already happened, like it's not even on the horizon, per se. So is, you're saying your, your computations don't factor that in?
Yeah, we weren't aware of that change. What percentage decrease is it?
Well, of the city of Orono, it's roughly a third decrease in the area of the city of Orono. So I don't know if there's a way to quantify that easily, what that dollar amount is.
Yeah, 60, 70,000.
Okay.
And 70,000 in most of those years would still, looks like it would cover it. This is a draft, so if we get exactly what that number is, I'll update it for this. And if there's any change in that, well, either way, I'll, I would update the numbers for you.
Yes, that's the initial change, and then after, we have a contract with Orono that ends at the end of this year. So when that takes place, unless something changes between now and then, they'll be, then we would lose all of Orono's 2% money. Which would be, I imagine, a significant amount, so that we would need to kind of factor that into then, how that would have an impact on it, I would assume.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, but, I mean, those are a couple scenarios, but there's also this scenario that negotiations go well. And the scenarios are, in fact, the numbers we should be looking at.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, and we're kind of, we don't know a lot, there's a lot of, and I answered questions like the, with that now. And we're having really good negotiations with Orono. We're discussing this, some of this is part of what we're discussing, is this 2% money. And, you know, what things are going to look like in the future. But we, you know, it's kind of, we don't, there's a lot of unknowns right now, I think it's fair to say.
Well, and I think that was probably the basis for the assumptions right now. Again, if, if we have different numbers that we have some certainty of, we're, we're unhappy to change that, because it won't take, take that much to do.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Other questions or comments?
So it seems like we don't want to make a decision tonight. Maybe table it?
Yeah, I think that's probably in the best interest, just to get more information, and it certainly doesn't, you know, we've, I think it's the Fire Relief Association has pointed out. And we've had kind of a good relationship over the years, where when they come to us with this, when, when the margins have exceeded 110% or so. We've, you know, been very accommodating on approving those, and I don't see that changing. But it's just the, a lot of, a lot of unknowns right here for the first time in many years with this whole situation. And so we want to definitely, do we kind of support the firefighters, but we got to, it'd be good to know, for me personally, have more data. And then we'll see with the, even the next couple of weeks, and we were, we're meeting with Orono on Friday, for example, and with their negotiating team. And, you know, I'm going to personally bring this up with them, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And so more to come in the near future, but.
So uncertain probability on which direction it might go?
Right, right. I mean, we all have our desires, including the newly elected Orono City Council. So I think everybody's got sort of their, you know, vision on this, but we need to, there's a lot of mechanics, mechanical things to put together first. And some agreements that need to be signed and things like that, so.
Yeah, we'll be glad to update everything when you have a number that you feel good with. I understand the uncertainty that's out there. Again, the modeling was done with assuming things go forward the way it is.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, I mean, the, and the city of Long Lake, you know, it's the Long Lake Fire Department. We provide service to, to three other cities, and, but the city of Long Lake itself is, is financially responsible for the Relief Association, as you know. But others may be watching at home, you know, and don't know that. So we're just trying to be careful about that, and, and our Long Lake taxpayers are on the hook for this if, if, you know, if there's drastic changes. So I'm just personally trying to be cognizant of that, in addition, trying to look out for the firefighters, certainly want to support them in this, in this particular community, so.
Yeah, and I think I, I would agree that, I mean, my, my intuition right now is to table this, but keep this at the forefront. Because these scenarios very likely are 100% right. But we have to have things, you know, meet for the negotiation to have that be the case. So I would like to keep this at, at the front of mind. And when this, when we get more clarity, I would like to bring this back up to council and make sure that we can discuss it again.
Great, agree with that. And, okay. Well, I'll make a motion to table this item for further discussion in the future. Is that?
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion, any other comments council members want to make or staff?
I just want to add that, you know, we are completely committed to Long Lake Fire. And, and I think we've shown that the last several years. And I, I would support, I have no problem supporting this, but I want to see how these next month. But I want to see how these next month or so go as we navigate, you know, where the direction is going. But we're hopeful that it's going to, to, to go in a positive direction, so.
Yeah, I understand that. And it, it is a direct impact number. Whatever that changes would potentially alter the outcome. So I totally understand.
So as these, as negotiations evolve, I'm assuming it's, we, we could bring those numbers to you in pretty short order, if we could get that done?
That'd be very straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just only add, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of unknowns out there. But the one thing that is known for sure and is not uncertain at all is the respect that we have for the firefighters and what they do for our community and for everybody up here. So that goes unspoken.
All right, there's a mo- motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Relief Association.
That was fun.
All right, we'll move on to, I think, another Relief Association item, which seven C accepted donation of a refrigerator from the Long Lake Fire Relief Association and consider partial reimbursement to the Fire Relief Association. Chief Highland, is this you?
Yes, sir, thank you. The, the Relief Association purchased a new refrigerator for two thousand seven hundred and one dollars. And that included delivery and getting rid of the old refrigerator and the old pot machine. But the, the reason that they, they're requesting to split the payment on it is because they went from a regular refrigerator to a commercial sized refrigerator so they could accommodate things like the pancake breakfast and open houses and things of that nature. And so since they needed a bigger refrigerator, they thought it'd be fair if we split the cost. And so they would be asking for reimbursement check of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents to the Long Lake Fire Relief Association.
Great, all right. Any questions for Chief Highland on, on this one?
Comes out of your budget.
Is it?
Stocked with the ice cream?
What's that? Yeah, we're stocked with ice cream.
Okay. Great, all right. So entertain a motion on this, if there's another question.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of a refrigerator from Long Lake, Long Lake Fire Relief Association and contribute partially to the Fire Relief Association in the amount of thirteen hundred fifty dollars and fifty cents. Did I get that number correct?
Yeah, it's going to be motion A.
So motion A, yeah, we, they kind of, they have two motions for us. Okay, so you're, you're kind of.
Doing too much at once.
Motion, or option A. You made a motion, option A, which is, okay.
Motion to adopt resolution accepting the donation of a stainless steel, commercial style refrigerator to the city of Long Lake for the Long Lake Fire Department and authorizing a partial, partial equipment cost reimbursement payable to the Long Lake Firefighters Relief Association.
It's nice. All right, we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, sure stays at a constant thirty-seven degrees, right? Something like that? Okay. Item, move on to seven D. As a dog, receive fourth quarter two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four revenues and expenditures. Amanda?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting you with an unaudited 2024 revenue and expense report. It appears that we are going to end the year on track, if not better than expected. Currently, all of the funds have a positive cash balance. As you can see on page fifty-five, this is a huge improvement over prior years for the city of Long Lake. In addition to that, the general fund, which is found on page fifty-six, is coming up at an almost break even at year end. This is considering the large expenses that we had in 2024, including legal fees, window replacement, and et cetera. Our enterprise funds had a very small combined loss of approximately twenty-three thousand dollars. That's a combination of the water, sewer, storm and recycling funds. This loss of twenty-three thousand dollars does include non-cash depreciation amounts of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that are included in each, in each fund. One large expense that has affected each of our enterprise funds in 2024 were the payments towards our CASA one twelve, phase one, phase two, and phase three. These payments totaled two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in 2024 and were redistributed to each of the funds in according to a schedule that the auditors provided me. This was an unexpected expense, and we did not prepare for it, but covered the costs nonetheless. In addition to this expense, the water fund, Fund Six Oh One, spent eighty-four thousand dollars on repairs to well two. We are starting to prepare for, prepare and budget for well one replacement and repairs in the future. I feel that we are on a good track with our enterprise funds. And I'm going to continue to keep an eye on expenses and utility rates going forward. Please let me know if you have any questions for me, council.
With the, the costs that, for phase one, two, and three on the, on the CASA?
Yes.
That could have been taken out of the turnback funds because, right? Because that's what.
So we had bonded, and I, I worked really close with our, our audit firm during the process of this. We had bonded for CASA one twelve. And when we thought that a majority of the money had been paid for, we redistributed the bond proceeds into the funds in accordance to their costs.
Bond issuance.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I get that.
So the proceeds were put into six oh one, six oh two, and six oh three.
Okay.
And so we just felt like it made sense, especially because the funds could handle the expenses here.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not complaining about it.
No, absolutely, yes.
But isn't, isn't the capital project fund four oh one, isn't that what used to be called the turnback fund?
It is, it is. And I probably would have considered that a little bit more had we not put the, the proceeds, the bond proceeds in there.
Okay.
Now, in fact, I worked with the auditors just this morning. And I reached out to Hennepin County about trying to get a final amount that phase three is going to, phase three, we're expecting one more invoice. I'm not expecting it to be very big, but I want an amount from Hennepin County so we don't have these surprises in the future.
In about five years, you'll get it.
But the auditors are aware of it, and we are preparing. So even with, even with, so six oh one got the largest impact of that, of that payment. And they still, I mean, we budgeted to lose a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars with depreciation. And so we, we were doing pretty good. And that was on account of our public works department and our public works director doing a really good job on his expenses this year.
Plus, we had eighty-four thousand for the well repairs.
And eighty-four thousand per well. Now, when you guys are looking at the reports and you're trying to see where those CASA one twelve payments came from, they're going to be towards the bottom of each fund. And they are in a line item of its own called construction contract. I did reactivate that line item so that we could keep it separate and not blend it with other expenses that are on a regular basis. So it's towards the bottom of each, each of the funds. So page sixty-three, sixty-five, and sixty-six, you're going to see a line item called construction contract. And that is in reference to the CASA one twelve payments.
Okay. Fire, do we have a year? I was trying to find the, I see the fire department.
Fire is on the last page.
Oh.
I'm sorry about that. It is, fire begins on page sixty-eight.
Ah, there it is, okay. So the, the, so ninety-six percent. So, so does, what does this equate to yet as far as refund, if any, to our contract city?
I am, I've asked the auditors, as I mentioned, the auditors are here this week. I've asked them to, to verify these numbers very closely and then work with Scott on determining how much a refund would be and how that's going to work. I don't have as much information for you on fire because.
To be determined, okay. It was impressive, so police, what, a police contract was just within like three dollars or something like that? It's like that was, seemed like it was.
Yeah, the police contract, we're pretty fortunate. We have an ongoing schedule on that one.
Okay. All right, and then payment management fund, is that a little, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand? Is that a little bit higher than what we were thinking, or?
We didn't do a project last year.
We.
So we're doing Lindwood this year.
Okay, so that's the, that's the plan?
And so that's the franchise fees?
Uh, two, I don't remember what they said it was. We haven't gone through the whole project yet.
But that's a full rebuild?
No, it will just be mill and overlay and some storm.
So no utilities?
Correct, because there's, we're doing that one because there isn't any utilities.
So, yeah, we were going to take that one because it's probably a manageable one?
Yeah, it's small, it's been beat up. If you were on the night to night, it's, it's, it's due. I mean.
And then we're going to start, I mean, we had kind of a plan, you know, for which ones were going to be next. But are we going to revisit that, or?
Probably after Lindwood, we'll take a look. We're looking to get the updated presentation for the bonding bill. I know that WSB is kind of revamping that last one and trying to get more, more items, I won't say in it, but more, more factuals, I guess, if you want to say. So that we can present that when the legislators start showing up.
So when are they going to present for just the Lindwood?
Uh, they have a pre-con or meeting with utilities on Thursday with Sean, which is just a high level view, who's going in, center point, Excel, et cetera. If they're moving anything, kind of pre, pre-plan. And then they'll be coming back and saying, you know, here's the scope, here's our plan and our timing and all that stuff here in the next, they want to do it soon. So it, the wheels are turning.
Wouldn't it need to go out to bid soon, or won't that be?
Yeah, that will be the secondary. So we'll go through the scope, you guys will approve that, everything that we're talking about, estimated dollar amount in engineering and dollar amount, et cetera. We'll go out for bids and we'll have it, you know, start early spring and before frost. You know, just so, usually you get better pricing that way. But it's not going to be piecemeal. We've already learned this before that you don't get to leave for a week at a time. You, as soon as you start, you have to end.
Okay.
Because that's what we did on another project, and it caused headaches, so.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thanks for the update on WSB too, and all that's coming.
So we were a hundred and thirty over on actuals on revenue from budget about?
Which?
For fire?
Just, oh, oh, I'm sorry, the general fund I'm talking about.
Okay.
I was just wondering what, what.
So.
I see there was building permits that were higher than.
Yes, so building permits, and this is an adjustment that we, I believe we've made in the 2025 budget. Those, they took an upturn a couple of years ago, and they haven't decreased. So with those increased income, we're also going to see an increase of expense as well that kind of offsets those. So if you follow the note, number one down, you're going to see some expenses related to that. Another thing with one oh one is, I don't like to depend on this in the future. So I've actually asked that this doesn't get budgeted because it did burn finance a little bit in the past when we've had losses. But we had quite a large interest earning that, an interest, I believe I've explained in the past, our investment accounts, the interest that we earn on it on an annual basis gets divided amongst each of the funds based on the amount of money in that fund. So if the general fund has twenty-five percent of fund balances, then it gets twenty-five percent of the interest. So if you'll see, we had an interest deposit of fifty-one thousand.
Yeah.
I choose on purpose not to budget any money in interest because it's an uncontrolled activity. The city has no control of it. I kind of just look at, like, look at that interest as.
So they, so going, even going back to, interest will get booked, but they also take it against maturity value? Or even in that, there's a market loss, might, might could probably explain more, but like, time money changes on, before it matures, that they would book it as a loss. So sometimes it shows as a loss.
But so each of the funds gets a portion of the interest?
Correct.
So what was the total interest we earned by?
It's approximately two fifty to three hundred thousand last year.
Oh.
I can get you the exact amount if you'd like, but it was approximately two fifty to three hundred.
And that's on, like, the five percent kind of T-bills?
My bills have, or the way my ladder is working now, it'll be way higher. That's some, that's old money. That's interest that was rolling, you know, at one time at a two percent or less, so.
It's right now close to five.
Yeah, between four and five for the next five to six years.
So in 2025, 2026, we have some really low interest earning accounts falling off. Because if you think about it, those would have been purchased.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, when interest rates, there are some that are less than a percent.
Yeah.
And so I'm just watching closely for those to fall off. And, but right now, the average is around five percent. And we reconciled it on a monthly basis. And I can actually send you our investment statements for the, for 2024 if you'd like, so you can kind of see monthly. Yeah, monthly gains, so.
Does that have the, the average rate? And does it have like an average maturity?
Actually, yeah, if I send that to you, and I'll make a note of it. It's extremely interesting because there's going to be a section in there, a tab called Schedule C, and you're going to see each one of the funds, you're going to see the date of purchase, the number of shares, the rate, and then the maturity date. And they're actually in order by maturity date.
Okay.
And the type of fund, whether it's a bond or a CD, whichever. So I can send it to you.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be cool to look at.
Yeah, probably since the last time you looked at it, it's changed a little bit.
Yeah.
Our average rate's way higher than when you and I dug into it.
Can you send that to everybody?
I will, yep.
Okay.
Great.
All right, any other questions for Lindwood on this?
Sounds like we're in the red, or in the black.
Don't jinx.
Don't say red.
No, I do want to think, you know, our staff works really hard and makes sure that we stay on budget or under budget. You know, we've all learned that we can live without sometimes. Sometimes we do have to spend the money, but, you know, all in all, we are all on the same page saying, you know, we keep each other in check. And they do all a very good job of running their department really well.
And the residents of Long Lake, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And the fire department.
That's awesome.
Yes, he's one of the.
I mean, like I said, he's part of the, part of the department, so.
Yes, his fund came in, came in really well.
With all the unplanned expenses that we had last year, that's an impressive feat to come in on budget.
It was, yeah, it was a little nerve wracking last couple of months. I've met with each of the department heads, and we've just been kind of discussing.
I cut up their credit cards and all.
Yeah, we've had a lot of open communication with each, with stuff in the, in the department heads, trying to figure out where we were sitting on budget. And, you know, Chief Highland and I actually met and talked about, we, we anticipated being on our budget. And he really looked at what was needed for the fire department. And he, he didn't want to spend frivolously. And so, yeah, it was, we've had great communication last couple of months trying to get, trying to get to what you guys see right now.
Great work, thank you. It's, we were hearing last year and other times, so the narrative that, you know, Long Lake has these financial problems or is, you know, hurting, hurting financially. And it's just not the case.
Bleeding red as a former mayor.
A specific quote, yeah. So that's not the case, obviously, as we can see in front of us. And we appreciate staff's help in keeping, keeping our, making, making good use of our citizens and taxpayers' money.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you.
And if you have any questions, after you have a chance to look at this a little bit closer, you can let me know once the auditor is complete. Obviously, the auditors will be here to submit the final.
Yeah, great.
And forever change, the recycling fund won't be negative.
That's a good thing. All right.
I'll make a motion to receive the fourth quarter 2024 revenues and expenditures as of December thirty-first, 2024, as presented.
Second. Thank you, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thanks again. All right, move on to item eight, other business. Check in with council members here. Council member newcomer.
Nothing from me.
All right, Councilman Feldman?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Dimak?
Just an observation that I wanted to share. As I have been driving the new phase three of the West Side Boulevard from Willow to Old Crystal Bay, I've noticed that, I was on the, the Citizens Advisory Committee back in 2012 when we started planning it. And I remember we, at that time, we were focused on sort of our downtown and along the lake. And, and we were working with. and, um, and we were working with the Hennepin County person, I can't remember his name, but he, he was very specific about what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed. And one thing that was not going to be allowed was to have no shoulder because I, I was pushing to have the berm along the lake not be so steep and so, hey, couldn't we, couldn't we like, extend that because we have such a wide roadway here? Or even at one time I proposed having a, a sidewalk on the south side as well as the trail along the lake. And they said, no, 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 we can't have that because we have to have a full lane of shoulder, you know, in case a car breaks down, so it's like, and now I'm driving along with hair and there's like, it, and actually I don't mind it, but it's like such a difference from, you know what I'm talking about, there's no, you know, you're, you're with the center median there and, and actually I think we even talked about a center median at time, you know, these islands of refuge they call them. So they must have a different county person that, that was, that was on that planning.
Doesn't look like Jim is there anymore.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Jim, that's right, it was, yeah. And, um, and I like it, but it's just very different from, from this side and where we don't have any, uh, you know, islands and, and, you know, Sean probably wouldn't have wanted islands anyway because, you know, it's just Mortimer and all of that. But, um, but it is just interesting how if a car breaks down now between Willow and Old Crystal Bay, uh, there's going to be backup because nobody's getting by that car and so that was, that was kind of an interesting difference.
And the speed limits are higher too, there too.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, you would have thought, uh, where we have a lower speed limit, you, you know, you could get away with maybe a difference. But, you know, we are, we are and, you know, it turned out very nice and, uh, just, just commenting on that difference in the look of phase three versus phase one and two.
I confess, the first time I commuted west on that, the first thing I thought is, oh, that's a lot of lovely new curb for a plow to get.
Yeah, yeah, right, that too.
Because suddenly the proximity of that felt so much closer.
Yeah, and by the way.
Ooh, that's going to take some hits.
Who has to maintain that median because it's Long Lake on one side and Orange on the other?
Good question.
So there's grass, well.
Oh, there's grass there?
Yeah, there's, there's grass there, um, parts of them.
Well, and I guarantee you that median, because at Old Crystal Bay, there's a little tiny.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that too.
And I stood there the other day and watched no less than fifteen kids drive over that.
Yes, yes.
You have to take, you have to take that turn wide.
It's got a short life expectancy.
I noticed that too. But, uh, anyway, that's kind of a, just an interesting observation.
Yeah.
Interesting, I didn't know that history behind it and that's, I think, county, that's kind of traffic calming or what's the word, to get cars to drive slower by having kind of narrower lanes, be right, that's a huge.
But that's where the speed limit is, and actually I don't even, you know, I was, I was like, what's the speed limit right here? And we have a speed limit sign down by the bank when you're going west, but I, I don't know that there's a speed limit at Willow or beyond Willow and.
Is that the liquor barn?
Yeah, but, okay.
Heading east.
But in that.
Heading east, but what about west?
Yeah, west, I don't know up the hill.
I don't, yeah, there isn't any speed limit sign from Brown, between Brown and Old Crystal Bay, to my knowledge, but, but I am glad that they continued the trail, uh, all the way to Crystal Bay because I thought they might try to scratch that, but, uh, that, that was there, so I think that's good. Um, so people can ride their bikes to school even though they don't allow it. I don't understand, but I guess I understand because it's busy roads and nobody wants to get them, you know, kids to get hurt, but, um, I, I think they're not even allowed to ride their bikes to school even if they want to. But now my kids can ride in the summertime to the activity center or something like that, so. Um, anyway, that's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you, got my stuff covered, so Councilman Qualley?
Nothing for me.
All right, Scott?
I'm good.
Chief?
Uh, blood drive at Station One on February twentieth, I can give you the information on that.
For Weston, okay.
And, uh,
Awesome.
The auction closes on Engine Eleven tomorrow or the next day, should have a dollar figure for you.
So I've seen it on Facebook and elsewhere, yeah, if anybody's interested in a fight, used fire engine.
Bit it up.
You might get stuck with it.
The old Engine Eleven?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, but we're hanging on to the heavy rescue now for a while, I heard, because it was useful for something?
Yeah, I mean, it still comes in handy, I'm sure eventually when, when we see all things shake out, we'll probably wind up getting rid of it, but.
Yeah.
We need it for now.
Chief, is the blood, blood drive a fundraiser?
Yes. For the Paskowitz family.
Awesome. And what date did you say that was again?
It's February twentieth.
Can I just give money instead? Can I just give money and just be like, I don't know?
Blood no good. Uh, and I should say that Scott and I played in a little hockey tournament on Saturday and, um, represented Long Lake. Still a little stiff, but we got through it.
I saw pictures of that on social media, they're great.
It was fun.
It was a good time.
No serious injuries, right? It's good.
We'll find out.
Who won?
Thanks for representing us.
Uh, mound one. We did not.
Darn it. Maybe next year.
Maybe next.
More prepared.
All right, Jeanette?
Thank you.
I have a little bit of a phone meeting tomorrow with MuniCode to chit chat about our online code hosting and get maybe a little more engaged in that product. I've been very well immersed in our website, of course, and, um, but really not so much that product. So I've got a new client representative that's been assigned to us. Going to chit chat, see if I can get a login and, most importantly, see if I have a way to potentially, at least on an interim basis, self-host the zoning code up there instead of on our website. I noticed a tab that says additional documents there, um, that a city has an option to host and if we have that option, then I'm going to investigate it a little further and see if maybe we could at least get our codes in one location and then maybe look at codifying further down the road because I know that that will be a more significant expense, so. So that's on my list for tomorrow and, uh, also this week, I've got an election equipment swap out coming, so. Election just keeps on coming, the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes. Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
All right. Great, thank you, Amanda?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, to council and our residents that are listening at home, the utility bills went out yesterday with the new rates and I encourage anyone, if they have any questions about their bill or the rates specifically, to please contact me directly, I'd be happy to talk, um, to each resident if they have questions, if the transition, um, from organics has been an issue for them, that they can contact Jeanette or I for that. But essentially just being available to answer any questions that they might have, I'd prefer, as I've told the residents I've talked to so far, I prefer them asking directly, giving me the opportunity to hear their concerns and, um, get rid of any misinformation that they might have. So I do encourage residents to contact me directly if they're concerned.
To piggyback on that, actually, I, I'd love to remind people to double check their refuse holler bills and make sure that they're not being billed for organics because if you are being billed for organics, by all means, get in touch with me and I will see what I can do about making sure that that changes promptly.
Great, sounds good. All right, thank you, last call. Otherwise, next council meeting is Tuesday, February eighteenth. Maybe we're not going to have a work session that evening, I imagine you will, so hopefully folks are available then. All right, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-eight PM.
What was wrong with your, uh?
Uh, it was, what's it called, the, um, it's one of the servers.